Today is Tuesday, July 12th, 2022. And I'll ask, please, that the councilors rise and pay tribute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Recording in progress.
I would like to remind everyone that this meeting of the town council is being aired live and recorded. In addition, I would ask the councilors, please, to maybe take just a moment to move the microphone a little closer to yourself. I'm guilty of this as well, but I know that we've had some past comments that some of our remarks haven't been picked up very clearly. Thank you. Firstly, there are condolences to be announced this evening. The council is aware of the recent passing of two veterans in the town. First, I would call to your attention the passing of Mr. Richard A. Stanton. He passed on June 17th, 2022. Mr. Stanton served in the United States Air Force during the Vietnam War. In addition, Mr. Kevin M. O'Brien has passed on July 4th, 2022. Mr. O'Brien also served in the United States Air Force during the Vietnam War. And I would ask, please, that you kindly join me in a moment of silence for the passing of these veterans. Thank you. Thank you very much. The first order of business this evening is the approval of minutes from prior meetings. This may be a little more challenging than is customarily the case. We have three meeting dates to consider approval of, and owing to a number of absences over the course of those past three meetings, some councilors may not be here now in order to take part in approval or would need to abstain from the vote because they were not present during the meeting in question. The first meeting is the minutes of May 24th, 2022. Absent during that session were Peter Columbotus, Frank Souza, Matt Rushton, and Sean George. I think that we may have, in fact, for that meeting, a quorum able to... Actually, no. Mr. Souza, I'm afraid you were not, and Mr. George. So we were unable to approve the minutes for the meeting of May 24th at this time. The next meeting was June 7th. Absent from that meeting were Peter Columbotus, Mr. Souza, and Mr. Wood. So I believe that, once again, we probably would not have a quorum for the purpose of approval of those minutes. And finally, the meeting of June 21st, 2022. Absent were councilors Kevin Perry and Sean George. Perhaps we can consider this... Approval of this action?
We have a winner.
Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve. And second. Thank you. Any discussion? Thank you very much. We will be conducting all of our votes this evening by roll call vote, owing to the remote participation of Councilor George. Could we have a roll call, please?
Sure. Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Still.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Five in favor, zero opposed.
Thank you very much. Moving on to announcements from the president, I do have one announcement. I've received, as did all the councilors, just today, a message from our town clerk, Mary Lee Hunt, with respect to the status of some of the charter changes that have been approved by the town council and forwarded to the state legislature for adoption. And Mrs. Hunt informs us, she has just spoken with Representative D'Amelia, and she wants to offer us a little update on the status. The changes have left the Senate and are now with the Joint Committee on Municipalities and Regional Government. Representative D'Angelo D'Amelia did speak with Representative Paul Tucker, who is vice chair of that committee. It's not clear whether the changes will go directly to the House Ways and Means Committee or how it will be handled, Mrs. Hunt reports. So I think the takeaway from our perspective is that there is movement on Beacon Hill to approve our changes. The most significant impact of not yet having approval of those changes, of course, is that the town election, which was conducted in April of this year but did not include on the ballot the election of town council members, will still need to be delayed. And I understand from Mrs. Hunt that it's not feasible at this point for the September primary election to feature that... Those elections on the ballot. So it would likely be in the November state election if, in fact, the state has taken approval action by that point. So that's just a word of update I wanted to provide to the public and to the councilors. Proclamations. We do have a proclamation this evening. It is the Town of Bridgewater, Massachusetts City of Peace Proclamation. And I would invite Fran Jeffries to come forward, if you would, and provide to us an introduction. I would appreciate that.
Thank you very much, councilpeople and Bridgewater citizens. I'm really, really happy to tell you that Bridgewater is now an international city of peace. We've joined an all-volunteer organization of cities around the world who each have their own way of doing a city of peace and have different structures. Ours will include working... A working group and includes existing organizations, the Rotary Club of the Bridgewaters, the Dice, and BCCR, the Public Library, the First Parish Unitarian, and the Martin Richard Institute, and the Meneca Institute at Bridgewater State University. We've supported each other in the recent Juneteenth celebration and will now are planning for the Second Annual Peace Building in Bridgewater and beyond week of events, and you'll hear more about that, I'm sure. It's just a wonderful time. The International Cities of Peace, or the larger organization, actually has special consultative status at the UN. So it brings us from things that are right here in our community to connecting with other cities of peace, to connecting with organizations that are looking at the social and economic conditions that contribute to peace worldwide. So I'm thrilled to request the proclamation from you, and I'd be happy to entertain any questions you might have.
I thank you very much, Mrs. Jeffries. I think it's a wonderful endeavor that's been undertaken. Again, I've commented in the past about the importance of active participation by individual citizens as well as grassroots organization here in Bridgewater. You've referred to a number of them, and I certainly concur that the importance of this event should not be understated. I think it's truly a badge of honor for the town to be associated with the International Cities of Peace. And I thank you very much for your efforts to spearhead this initiative. Congratulations. Moving on to citizen open forum, I would invite citizens who would care to deliver comments to the council to please... Please go to the podium, introduce yourself, identify your street, and you may proceed with your comments. Is there any citizen? Yes, please. Go right ahead.
Been a long time coming in here, huh? Janet Hanson, Pleasant Street, Bridgewater. First off, I wanted to mention, and I did talk to the town clerk about this, I had trouble with the new website. Can't get any agendas. I didn't even know about this meeting until yesterday when somebody asked me about it because of the raw milk situation that's coming up. And there's been other people, she said, so she suggested I mention that, that there's been difficulty for some of us to get on that. I usually get notifications. I didn't get any notification. I'm set up for just about every committee, and I have since the new website. So just so you know, there's an issue that hopefully can be worked out. I know you're going to be... There's a presentation about the hazards of raw milk, and there's also the ordinance. Bridgewater doesn't have any restriction to have selling raw milk at a farm, but now we're talking about hazards of raw milk. And I'm hoping that we can... I have no idea what's going to be presented, but hoping if it's a situation that we will be allowed to have an rebuttal at some point at another meeting with other people that show the value in raw milk and what is not a risk that some people are afraid of. It's a personal choice. People want to drink it. They do their homework. It's only done at a farm. It can't be at a retail store, and they are under even probably more stricter regulations than somebody who sells it for pasteurization. So you have to keep that in mind. You can't just say, oh, you know, it's bad for you. Any food can be at risk, but this is strictly regulated, and there are a lot of places around that sell it. People want it. There are benefits to it. You don't have to drink it. So it's just nice that people have that option. It's not going to be a mass, you know, infection, you know, for everybody. It's isolated, and it's... They do need to... You have to take that in consideration, but hopefully we can, if necessary, be able to present a rebuttal if we need to. I'm hoping that's an option. And I will let somebody else who knows better than me talk, too. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Hanson.
Good evening. Denise Shepherd-Pakev. And I'm probably not the person that Janet wanted to follow with more information, but I'm a cheesemaker. And I'm definitely in favor of raw milk being sold here in town. I have to drive to either Foxborough or Westport and have been for years where it's sold on farms. I know that it's highly regulated. I know that the farms are tested very, very frequently. They have very high standards of sanitation and production. It makes fabulous cheese. I make it for my family and friends. I know the state regulation, you can't sell raw milk cheese in this state unless it's been aged 60 days. I realize that. But you can give it to your friends and family, and they just devour it. So I'm really... I would love to see Bridgewater be able to have it. I know it's safe. I drink it, and I make cheese with it, and it makes fabulous cheese. And I think it's an opportunity that we should have here in Bridgewater. You know, other farms have it, and I think it'd be great for Bridgewater. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Shepherd. Any other citizen? Yes, Dr. Hunt.
Good evening. I am here in support of the raw milk sale in the town of Bridgewater. I noticed that there's a presentation on the hazards, but I also would urge and hope that whoever's doing that presentation would also convey Massachusetts regulations regarding the same. I think that's important to understand, that it is a highly regulated sale. I grew up in the 1940s... Yes, I'm very old. ...in the 1950s drinking raw milk. I grew up on the farm that my dad milked out a couple head of cattle every day. We had two to three gallons. I had three brothers. The four of us would go through those three gallons in one day. The issue right now is the proper safety of the sale of raw milk, and it's extensively studied. And I think the Hanson's who are proponents of this are clearly people who care about their community. I don't think they would come forward with this if they thought it was going to be the hazard that some people may think it is. I would encourage the town council to enable this sale, and I've heard now the cheese, that's great. And so I urge you to pass this resolution or order... I guess it's an order? Yes, an order to enable the sale here in Bridgewater, even though the state allows it regardless. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Hunt. Further comments? Yes, please.
David Hanson, 665 Pleasant Street. Most of the negative stuff you hear about raw milk is, I would say, because of what happens to it after it leaves the farm. In the particular instance that was brought up at the last meeting that this was discussed, there's... I'd be willing to bet that the person that made the ice cream was not the farmer but the person that bought the milk from the farm, and there could have been nothing wrong with the milk that was purchased. If you remember, they used to have a problem solver in the Enterprise years ago, and there's one here for somebody asking where they can buy raw milk. And it says that they either have to go to Dartmouth or Foxborough to get their milk. I have a letter from somebody that saw something online or read something in the Boston Globe when it was... When I was interviewed back around 2010. He's all the way from Worcester County and was driving to New Hampshire to get milk because he wanted the raw milk. Who knows whether I'll get into it or not, but it should be something that's available to the people of Bridgewater and put a little spin on it. It doesn't make you drive slow or smell bad.
Thank you, Mr. Hanson. Any other citizens for citizen open forum? It appears not. I thank you one and all for your comments. The next item on our agenda are appointments. We have a number of appointments to various boards and committees of the town. I would entertain a motion for approval of items A through E if the council finds that appropriate. So moved?
Second that.
Thank you very much. I've just simply momentarily left item F so that we have a slightly different introduction for that. The candidates for appointment to the boards in each case of items A through E, I believe, have all come to us by way of the citizen committee who have voiced approval of these individuals for their respective roles. And I'll read the roles and names of the individuals and the terms for which they have sought appointment. To the planning board, Mr. Ted Healy as an alternate member for the term 2022 to 2027. To the planning board also, M.J. Spagon as an alternate member for the same term 2022 to 2027. The elder affairs commission, a reappointment of Sandra Alley for the period 2022 through 2025. To the energy committee, Kristen Zarelli for the period... For the term 2022 through 2025. And for the conservation commission, Sarah Spurber for the term 2022 through 2025. I would entertain a motion for approval for those candidates in those positions. So moved?
Second.
Thank you very much. If we could have a roll call vote, please, Deborah.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
And Mr. Wood?
Yes.
That's six in favor, zero opposed.
Thank you very much. Also for appointment under item F, the... To the finance committee of the town is an appointment recommended by Councilor Wood. The candidate is Lee Bean, and I would ask Councilor Wood if he has comments to offer in support of that nomination.
Right. So let me start with making a motion to nominate, and let me introduce Lee before anyone seconds it. Lee Bean has been a member of the Bridgewater community for most of his life. He lived outside for a little bit, but he grew up down the street from me. I've known him for quite a long time. He approached me about a year ago with an interest of serving on FinCom, and his background, as some of you may have seen, but I'll describe, I think suits him well for that position. So Lee lives over on 40 Vera Drive, which was not in the email that was distributed earlier. He's lived there for quite a while. He has a business economics degree from Brown University. He's got a 15-year career in consumer packaged goods, and now he's a director of sales at a very large firm. He has a good understanding of the finances. I've talked to him a number of times about different finances and budgetary items, and he clearly understands the process and is very interested in supporting the FinCom membership in their activities.
Thank you very much. I would just note, for the benefit of the public, that the town finance committee is comprised of members who are appointed by... From various sources. The town manager makes certain appointments, the town clerk as well makes certain appointments, and the town council. Now, this particular vacancy on the finance committee is, in fact, a town council appointee position. And for that reason, it's not necessary for this appointment to have been recommended for adoption by the citizen advisory council. That's why we've adopted a slightly different procedure in connection with the approval of this appointment. So I would entertain a motion for approval. So moved?
Second?
Motion made and seconded. Thank you. Any further discussion?
Mr. Chairman, if I could, do we have a letter of interest from him, though, or...
There was one that Deborah passed out separately.
As long as...
Yeah, it didn't get included in the agenda package.
I know you're interested in him being on the committee, but is he interested?
Oh, yes. Yes.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you very much. If there's no further discussion, I would ask for, please, a roll call vote for the appointment of Mr. Bean to the finance committee.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
And Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Six in favor, zero opposed.
Thank you. Just with respect to all of the appointments that we've approved this evening, I want to extend congratulations and many thanks to each of the candidates. It's obviously necessary for the town to rely upon, you know, the participation of such well-qualified individuals in these important positions, and their contribution to the town in that regard is to be noted. We thank them. Moving on to hearings. We have two hearings this evening, the first of which, it is now 7:28 PM, order FY22-065, laying out and accepting a private way, Crimson Way. And the sponsor of this order is Councilor Moore. I'll turn it over to Councilor Moore.
Sure. I'll be brief. This is a small extension, I think, off Lyman Place, down off of South Street and my neck of the woods. Great neighborhood, beautiful street, beautiful houses. I drove down there today and got some waves, so I would encourage everyone to consider this.
Thank you very much, Counselor. Let me begin by simply asking if there are any general questions from the public with respect to this order of acceptance of this as a... As a public way in the town of Bridgewater. Any questions of general interest? Is there anyone from the public who cares to speak in favor of this order? Seeing none. Does any member of the public wish to speak in opposition to approval of this matter? And once again, seeing none. We will move to questions from the town councilors, if any. Mr. Wood?
As usual, other people get more details, and we have all required paperwork approvals from departments. There's none, so no hesitancy.
No. No hesitancy. It's been vetted by all the relevant departments, and they have all signed off.
Thank you both. Are there any further questions from the councilors? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion for approval.
So moved? Second?
We have a motion and a second. No further discussion, gentlemen? Then I will ask for a roll call vote, please.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
And Mr. Wood? Did I say your name twice?
I think it might be me. Mr. Moore also agrees.
Oh, I'm sorry. What am I doing? Six in favor, zero opposed.
Only counting one of those.
Yeah. Sorry.
Thank you very much. I will declare the hearing closed on the matter of the approval of the... As a public way for Crimson Way. Moving to our second public hearing of the evening. Time is 7:31, and I will open the public hearing on the matter of proposed ordinance, FY22-024, zoning ordinance, zoning map amendment, Main Street. And I'll first turn to Counselor Souza if you would like to offer any introductory comments.
It is just a correction. Part of the parcel was, when they rezoned it, it was split in half, and all they're trying to do is get the entire square footage into the same zoning as it was changed to. Okay? And that's what we're trying to do tonight. Just correct a little mistake that was made, I guess.
That's it. Thank you. I appreciate that. The... I just note that, in fact, the Community and Economic Development Committee had... Had approved this measure with... In a joint meeting with the planning board on May 25th. It has subsequently been introduced in the council where an amendment was approved that was removing one particular lot from the initial proposed ordinance, and the town council has approved that amendment. So it is here tonight for a final reading. I would ask if there are any general questions from the public with respect to this zoning ordinance matter? Seeing none. Does anyone from the public care to speak in favor of the adoption of this ordinance? I see no one. Anyone from the public who would care to speak in opposition to approval of this ordinance? Once again, we see none. Are there further questions from the town council as to this matter? Counselor Wood?
Thank you. To you... Through you to the town attorney, if I could, and my mic is on now. So our amendment was to exclude Block 12 from the zoning, which leaves it as is. And to construct it around 1 and 14 stays the same. 13 is within the zone. So my question specifically is, at some point in the future, should we decide to, can we come back and revisit the zoning of Block 12 if we pass this as is?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Very good. I thank you. Are there further questions from the councilors? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion for approval. So moved?
Second?
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion at all? Mr. Wood?
I'll just refresh some of my comments from the committee discussion and such. This came about because of one property that wanted to make an adjustment for parking, and their parking was restricted because the zoning setup years and years and years ago did not... It was residential, it wasn't commercial, et cetera. And so the team really put an effort in to straighten out the lines at all those businesses on that side of Main Street for the five or six Main Street-facing properties really are fixed for the future. And my comments back in the committee were 12 is acting as a business. It is a business. In the future, it will likely be a business. And I thought, and I continue to think... And I thought, and I continue to think, there was an oversight not to include it in the zoning piece because, for various reasons. I think this straightens out this piece. There's other strategic pieces we need to straighten out in the same way, and maybe we need to do that proactively and not wait for property folks to come and approach us on that, that front. And the last comment is the house itself. So throughout the hearings and throughout the conversations on this, no one has commented on the house, which is an old house. The old house follows, falls under the, years ago, we put a demolition ordinance in place, and there is a process that has to go through with the historic commission and others involved that effectively delays but does not stop the demolition. And I raise that because there was, there was an outcry when the two houses that CVS came down, but it strikes me as odd that no one has said anything about this house, which is effectively in the same age range. And I just wanted to say those so that people were aware of, aware of that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wood. And thank you also, Mr. Souza. I know that you had also previously endorsed the contention that this should really have been a more comprehensive view and not isolated to one side of the street, in effect.
Correct.
I thank you both. We have a motion and a second. I would ask, please, for a roll call vote.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
And Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Six in favor, zero opposed.
Thank you very much. I think that, given that result, I will declare the second hearing of the evening closed, and the time is now 7:37. Moving on, we have no license transactions this evening. There is a presentation that I have planned, and I will ask if, Deborah, if you can—
Michael has it.
Oh, okay. Well, thank you. Mr. Dutton will queue up my PowerPoint.
Right above that.
Right there?
From beginning?
There we go. Thank you.
I got that right.
First day with a computer.
Thank you.
We've had recent discussions with respect to the matter of the sale of raw milk here in Bridgewater, and there have been developments that only as of a week or so ago we had become aware of, and we'll discuss those actually coming up on the agenda in a, in a short while. My feeling is that there's a substantial body of scientific and medical evidence that would suggest the hazards of raw milk. And I've actually distributed to the councilors a, a document entitled "The Ongoing Public Health Hazard of Consuming Raw Unpasteurized Milk." It's dated January 17th, 2019, and it is from the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services. The reason I provided this, just this document, it's actually very comprehensive in scope. It was drafted for issuance to state and territorial epidemiologists and state public health veterinarians. Nonetheless, it is not overly scientific in its approach. It's really very understandable, and for anyone who cares to delve deeper, it's very well annotated with references to dozens of studies and papers. So that's simply something that the councilors may consider themselves individually. What I wanted to present to you in this PowerPoint presentation are some excerpts from, from websites, many of which are under the auspices of the organizations whose logos you see represented on the screen here. Many of them are governmental organizations, some of them are non-governmental organizations, but they all are, in fact, well, they represent well-researched items in the, in the discussion of raw milk and the hazards that raw milk presents. So these are not my own comments. I'm going to try to refrain from making any of my own comments because certainly I have no qualification in this regard, but I will just let the, the various slides speak for themselves. If you could. So this happens to be from the CDC website. It gives a rather in-depth introduction to raw milk, and as you can see just in the photo, it refers to raw milk, and products made from it can pose severe health, health risks, including death. And if I could have the next slide, it actually, one of the takeaways from this particular site is that it refers to a number of the diseases that, if you could advance that slide, Mr. Dutton? Just scroll down one.
Should I go back? Go back?
No. There you are.
You need to speak into the microphone.
Thank you.
Delayed.
So taken, if you can go back one.
Sorry, there's a little bit of a delay.
That's it. It identifies some germs linked to raw milk outbreaks. It identifies several here, Campylobacter, E. coli, Salmonella, and Listeria. There are other diseases that potentially can also be transmitted through ingestion of raw milk, and some of these slides will refer to some of them. If you could have the next slide, please. From the John Hopkins Bloomberg School of Public Health, drinking raw milk dramatically increases risk for foodborne illness, analysis finds. And the next slide shows an excerpt from that study. For their study, a team of investigators led by Keve Nockman, Ph.D., Director of the Public Health and Food Production Program at CLF, and an assistant professor with the Bloomberg School, screened approximately 1,000 articles and reviewed 81 published journal articles relevant to the health risks and benefits of consuming raw cow's milk. Microbial contaminants commonly found in milk include infectious Salmonella, Campylobacter, and Listeria species, along with E. coli type 0157H7. These bacteria can cause foodborne illness in humans, including diarrhea, vomiting, cramping, fevers, and sometimes more serious consequences, such as kidney failure or death. And the next slide, please. Deadly disease caused by raw milk has already put 19 states on high alert. This appeared in Science Alert. It's dated February 15th, 2019. And the next slide shows us a, an excerpt from that particular article. As a result, roughly half of all U.S. states have banned the sale of raw milk. While this tactic isn't foolproof, the CDC claims that as many more states allow the sale of raw milk, the number of associated outbreaks has gone up. From 1993 to 2012, raw milk was responsible for 127 disease outbreaks, including nearly 2,000 individual cases and 144 hospitalizations. Most of these cases were caused by Brucella, Campylobacter, certain types of E. coli, or Salmonella. And the next slide, please. From the same site. On the other hand, the risks from raw milk are clear. Out of all foodborne illnesses linked to dairy products, raw milk and raw cheese are responsible for no less than 96 percent. This means that unpasteurized dairy products cause 840 times more illnesses and 45 times more hospitalizations than their pasteurized counterparts. It is an unheard of for people who drink raw milk to contract rare diseases, which, if they aren't treated properly, can sometimes lead to paralysis, stroke, kidney failure, and even death. Next slide, please. Massachusetts Governor Wants Public Health Oversight for Raw Milk, dated August 16th, 2018. And the next slide shows us a, an excerpt from the governor's comments at that time. Baker Favors Language Saying: "Such rules and regulations shall consider applicable publications of the Food and Drug Administration, Public Health Service, United States Department of Health and Human Services, or any successor agency with like regulatory powers, provided, however, that the Commissioner of Public Health may adopt more stringent standards in order to minimize the risk of milkborne illness to the public." And the governor at that time was responding to proposed legislation that would have provided an easing of regulation of, on the sale of raw milk in Massachusetts. And the next slide. Raw Milk FAQs. This is provided by the American Dairy Association. There's, there are actually quite a few that we won't need to go into here because there's, you know, a certain degree of repetition, as you can already tell, but it refers to, certainly, milk and milk products provide a wealth of nutrition benefits. Raw milk, though, can potentially harbor dangerous bacteria, causing serious health risks to you and your family, being informed consumer. Next slide, please. Pharmacy Times had some interesting comments. Adverse effects associated with consuming raw milk include diarrhea, stomach cramping, vomiting, kidney failure, paralysis, and death. Raw milk may contain harmful germs, including Campylobacter, Cryptosporidium, E. coli, Listeria, and Salmonella. Educate patients that there are no known health benefits from consuming raw milk that cannot be obtained from drinking pasteurized milk that is free from disease-causing bacteria, parasites, and viruses. Dispel common myths that raw milk can prevent or cure diseases, including asthma, allergies, heart disease, or cancer. It goes on to identify some of the sources of contamination of raw milk that could lead to the potential cause of diseases. These include cow feces coming into direct contact with milk, cow diseases, insects and rodents, humans through cross-contamination, bacteria living on the skin of cows, and cow udder infections. Next slide, please. From Scientific American, Got E. coli? Raw Milk's Appeal Grows Despite Health Risks. And the next slide. From the article, Such Outbreaks Are Largely Preventable If Milk Is Pasteurized, said Robert Tuck, Deputy Director of the Division of Foodborne Bacterial and Mycotic Diseases at the U.S. Centers for Disease Control. The process, known as high-temperature, short-time pasteurization, was invented more than a century ago and relies on heat, at least 72 degrees Celsius, for 15 seconds to kill the stew of E. coli, Campylobacter, Listeria, Salmonella, and other microbes that may lurk in milk that come straight from a cow or goat. Medical experts consider pasteurization as one of the major breakthroughs in public health history, a triumph, Tuck adds. The next slide, please. This is an article that appeared in a publication from the National Institutes of Health, and the next slide has an excerpt of interest. Claims related to improved nutrition, prevention of lactose intolerance, or provision of good bacteria from the consumption of raw milk have no scientific basis and are myths. Next slide, please. From the Food and Drug Administration, Raw Milk Misconceptions and the Danger of Raw Milk Consumption. Next slide. Summary, None of the claims made by the raw milk advocates that we have examined for you can withstand scientific scrutiny. Unfortunately, the false health benefits claimed, claims of raw milk advocates may cause parents to give raw milk to their children and prompt immunocompromised people, people such as pregnant women, the elderly, and hospitalizedized patients who want better nutrition, to start consuming raw milk. It is these very same subgroups of the population, however, that are most at risk for becoming ill or even dying from foodborne illness as a result of consuming adulterated raw milk. Next slide, please. From the Periodical Infection Control Today, Exposures to Drug-Resistant Brucesiosis Linked to Raw Milk. And the next slide gives us an excerpt. This is actually an excerpt describing brucesiosis provided from the Mayo Clinic. Brucesiosis is a bacterial infection that spreads from animals to people. Most commonly, people are infected by eating raw or unpasteurized dairy products. Sometimes the bacteria that cause brucesiosis can spread through the air or through direct contact with infected animals. Signs and symptoms of brucesiosis may include fever, joint pain, and fatigue. The infection can usually be treated with antibiotics. However, treatment takes several weeks to months, and the infection can recur. Brucesiosis affects hundreds of thousands of people and animals worldwide. Avoiding raw dairy products and taking precautions when working with animals or in a laboratory can help prevent brucesiosis. Next slide, please. From the Periodical Food Safety News, Remembering the Sad 1985 Listeriosis Outbreak. And the next slide gives us an excerpt. This is actually provided from the Centers for Disease Control. Listeriosis is a serious infection caused by the germ Listeria monocytogenes. People usually become ill with Listeriosis after eating contaminated food. The disease primarily affects pregnant women, newborns, older adults, and people with weakened immune systems. It's rare for people in other groups to get sick with Listeria infection. Listeriosis is usually a mild illness for pregnant women, but it causes severe disease in the fetus or newborn baby. Some people with Listeria infections, most commonly adults 65 years and older, are, and people with weakened immune systems, develop severe infections of the bloodstream, causing sepsis, or brain, causing meningitis or encephalitis. Listeria infection can sometimes affect other parts of the body, including bones, joints, and sites in the chest and abdomen. Next slide, please. From WebMD, Steer Clear of Raw Milk, Researchers Warn. And the next slide gives us an excerpt. The researchers warned that people are nearly 100 times more likely to get a foodborne illness from raw, unpasteurized milk than from pasteurized milk. While some claim that raw milk is healthier and tastes better than pasteurized milk, the report authors said that their findings show that raw milk carries significant health risks. People should not drink it, they said. The team at the John Hopkins Center for a Livable Future reviewed 81 published journal articles about raw cow's milk. They found it often was contaminated with Salmonella, Campylobacter, Listeria, and a dangerous type of E. coli. These bacteria can cause foodborne illness, leading to diarrhea, vomiting, cramping, fever, and even kidney failure or death. Next slide, please. From the New York State Department of Health, The Dangers of Drinking Raw Milk. And the next slide gives us a, an excerpt. The bacteria in raw milk can seriously affect the health of anyone who drinks raw milk or eats foods made from raw milk. While some people will have mild illness from bacteria in raw milk, others are at much higher risk of life-threatening illness, especially pregnant women, children, the elderly, and people with weakened immune systems, such as people with cancer or HIV infection or recipients of organ transplants. Next slide, please. From the Massachusetts Department of Agricultural Resources, FAQs About Buying Raw Milk in Massachusetts. As Mrs. Hanson has correctly— As Mrs. Hanson has correctly pointed out, raw milk is available in Massachusetts on farms which have received a certificate of registration from the Department of Agricultural Resources. There's one excerpt, I'll just draw your attention on the next slide, from this list of FAQs. Every tank of milk for pasteurization is tested. Raw milk is only tested once a month. The next slide, please. Whittier Farms Pasturized Milk Listeria Outbreak Lawsuit, Massachusetts, two thousand and seven. And the next slide offers an excerpt. Of the five people sickened, three were male, and the median age was seventy-five, range thirty-one through eighty-seven. All five patients were hospitalized. All three of the males, seventy-five to eighty-seven years old, including Mr. Powers, died from sepsis attributed to Listeria and died close to the time of their acute illness onset. The first case in a female was in a thirty-one-year-old woman who had, I will not be able to pronounce it, Chorioamnioitisis, I know I didn't pronounce that correctly, my apologies, at thirty-six weeks of gestation. She delivered a healthy but premature infant. A subsequent placental culture tested positive for Listeria. The second case in a female was in a thirty-four-year-old woman who had a fever and abdominal pain. She experienced a stillbirth at thirty-seven weeks gestation, and cultures of her blood, fetal blood, and placental tissue all were positive for Listeria." The next slide, please. The Food Poison Journal, Milk Confirmed as Source of Massachusetts Listeria Outbreak. And there's no particular excerpt that I've commented, that I've selected from that article. It's just a, an additional source, a little repetitive, probably. From the following slide. This is something from the University of Minnesota Center for Infectious Disease Research and Policy. And an excerpt of interest to us is on the next slide. The group's findings come from a review of a hundred and twenty-one dairy-related outbreaks that were reported from nineteen ninety-three to two thousand and six in all fifty states, and an analysis of the nation's milk production during the same period. Their findings appeared online today in Emerging Infectious Diseases. The outbreaks were linked to four thousand four hundred and thirty-one illnesses, two hundred and thirty-nine hospitalizations, and three deaths. Raw milk or yogurt or cheese made from raw milk were implicated in sixty percent, seventy-three, of the outbreaks, and was responsible for nearly all of the hospitalizations. Of the seventy-one outbreaks linked to raw milk, fifty-five, or seventy-seven percent, occurred in states where the products are legal." The next slide, please. From the American Academy of Pediatrics, Consumption of Raw or Unpasteurized Milk and Milk Products by Pregnant Women and Children. And the next slide gives us an excerpt. Efforts to limit the sale of raw milk products have met with opposition from those who are proponents of the purported health benefits of consuming raw milk products, which contain natural or unprocessed factors not inactivated by pasteurization. However, the benefits of these natural factors have not been clearly demonstrated in evidence-based studies, and therefore do not outweigh the risks of raw milk consumption. Substantial data suggests that pasteurized milk confers equivalent health benefits compared with raw milk without the additional risk of bacterial infections." Next slide, please. From the Center for Disease Control, Increased Outbreaks Associated With Non-Pasteurized Milk, United States, two thousand and seven through two thousand and twelve. An excerpt tells us, nineteen ninety-three through two thousand and six, fifty-five outbreaks, or seventy-five percent, linked to raw milk occurred in states where it was legal to sell raw milk products. The rate of outbreaks linked to raw milk fluid is more than twice as high in states that allow the sale of raw milk than in states that do not allow its sale. The rate of outbreaks linked to cheese made from raw milk is nearly six times as high in states that allow the sale of raw milk than in states that do not allow its sale. Restricting the sale of raw milk products reduces outbreaks linked to raw milk." The next slide, please. Frontiers in Public Health, Building the Evidence Base for the Prevention of Raw Milk Acquired Bru擦losis, a Systemic Review. And the next slide tells us, interestingly, despite the significant public health risk that raw milk presents to consumers, the sale of raw milk for human consumption is not prohibited in all states in the U.S. Currently, thirteen states allow raw milk to be sold in retail stores. Seventeen states allow raw milk to be sold only on farms where the milk is produced, that would include Massachusetts. Eight states allow raw milk to be attained via the Cow Share Program, which involves the leasing of cows to obtain a percentage of a cow's milk production, while twenty-one states prohibit the sale of raw milk for human consumption. Interestingly, the outbreaks of raw milk-related diseases, including bru擦losis, have been reported mostly in states that legalize the sale of raw milk." And the next slide, please. Raw Milk Loophole Results in Drug-Resistant Bacteria Outbreak in Colorado. This from Infectious Disease News. And there is a brief excerpt that provided from this article. According to the CDC, people may drink raw milk, unpasteurized milk, in an attempt to get back to nature by consuming fewer processed products, but the agency considers raw milk to be one of the riskiest food items that a person can consume." Next slide, please. This is actually from the state of Arkansas. It's an article that talks about a particular case, and I have an excerpt. After drinking the raw milk, which was contaminated with E. coli, McGonigal Martin's son became very sick. He was diagnosed with Hemolytic-Euremic Syndrome, which can cause kidney failure. Doctors had to fight to save his life. Luckily, with the help of dialysis and a ventilator, McGonigal Martin's son survived. For some, getting sick from raw milk can mean many days of diarrhea, stomach cramping, and vomiting. For others, it can mean kidney failure, paralysis, chronic disorders, and even death. While it is possible to get foodborne illness from many different foods, raw milk is one of the riskiest of all." The next slide, please. From the Ministry of Health, Ontario, Canada. And I have a brief excerpt. Milk Must Be Pasteurized in Order to Be Sold in Canada. Canada does not allow the sale of raw milk at all. Pasteurization ensures the milk we drink is safe while retaining the nutritional properties of milk. While some people believe that raw milk offers greater nutritional value than pasteurized milk, research indicates that there is no significant difference. You should weigh any supposed health benefit against the overwhelming evidence that drinking raw milk can make you ill. Children are particularly at risk for infections from drinking raw milk." Next slide, please. Speaking of children, the American Academy of Pediatrics, Consumption of Raw or Unpasteurized Milk and Milk Products by Pregnant Women and Children. And I think I do not have a particular excerpt from that article. You can be glad. And the next slide, A Raw Cheese Is Being Blamed for Listeria Outbreak That Includes Two Deaths. This appeared in Modern Farmer in two thousand and seventeen. And I think, again, I do not have a, an excerpt from that article. In the Journal of Dairy Science, A Survey of Foodborne Pathogens in Bulk Tank Milk and Raw Milk Consumption Among Farm Families in Pennsylvania. Between nineteen seventy-three and nineteen ninety-two, raw milk was associated with forty-six outbreaks of foodborne illness in the United States, and it is significant to note that forty, forty, eighty-seven percent of these outbreaks occurred in states where the interstate sale of milk was legal at the time. Consumption of raw milk is a high-risk behavior and will continue to cause morbidity and mortality until people stop consuming raw milk and raw milk products." The next slide, please. Infection Control Today, this from two thousand and twelve, Majority of Dairy- Related Disease Outbreaks Linked to Raw Milk. I have no excerpt from that particular article. And the next slide, once again, brings us back to the beginning, the various governmental and non-governmental agencies that are prominent in emphasizing the hazards of raw milk. I have no further comments, no, nothing further to present. I thank you very much. I know that some of that was a little tedious to work through. I think it's all very important, and I certainly appreciate your attention. Moving on to...
Mr. Chairman, Mr. President, may I ask one question?
Yes, go right ahead.
I believe there are seventeen farms in the state of Massachusetts to sell raw milk.
Yes.
In the past ten years, how many cases of illness have been reported?
I don't know how many. I know there have been some. I, I can't answer that.
How many have contributed to lettuce?
I...
Huge numbers across the country. Okay? I'm looking at home. We're looking at how our state is controlling the farmers and the product, and the sales and educating people. Those are the numbers I want to know. I want to know, in the past ten years, how many people in this state were ill? How serious were those illnesses? And did anybody die? That's the, that's the facts that I'd like to look at.
Some of which has been answered in, in certain of my slides, but I'll endeavor...
Past ten years.
I'll endeavor to research an answer to that question for you.
Thank you.
I'm happy to do that. Is there anyone else who would care to pose a question? Counselor?
I just have a couple of comments, and, and I just want, I just want the, I would just want the public to know that that was not a council presentation. That was a presentation by one individual counselor. So it was not really part of what we, as a council, wanted to hear. It's a presentation by one counselor that did some research and put it on the agenda as a presentation, which is fine, but it's not something the council endorses as a whole. The other point I wanted to make is that you could, you could do a research on any product. You could do a research on the health risks of cigarettes. We all know that. Health risks of alcohol, the health risks of chewing gum, the health risk of anything, and you could find reports from Health and Human Resources, Health and Human Resource Administration on the downfall of all those products, probably even on water. Soda. Junk food, ice cream. You could, you could do a presentation on pretty much any product. It's, it's, it's safe and responsible consumption of, of anything that's important. And when we run for public office, we run for public office to help people. And what we're trying to do is help a local business. And we're trying to help them with their business, help them perhaps with a, an area that they, they'd like to, to do, like to get involved with. And as has been said before, they may not do this. They just want that option. And what's wrong with that? And you're right, I did not hear any statistics about recent, as Counselor Souza had brought up. I did not hear any statistics that were presented tonight on those that are selling raw milk throughout this state, any incidents, hazards to people's health since that's been going, going on. So I hope when we get to the later discussion on this, that we, we support the local business and what they want to do. And we, so when, I guess my question to you, Counselor Chase, is when, when you presented these statistics to the health agent in town, or the Board of Health, what was their response?
I've invited the Board of Health to participate in our meeting this evening. I also invited the Board of Health to participate in the Community and Economic Development Committee meeting, which took place last week, considering the proposal that was brought forth by Counselor Souza. I don't believe, unless I'm mistaken, that any member of the town Board of Health is present here this evening. I do know that I received a written comment from Mr. Dugados, who was a member of the Bridgewater Board of Health. And he expressed strong support for the sale of raw milk here in Bridgewater. I told him, previous to his comment, that his comment would be made part of the record it now has. I also know that during the CEDC meeting, just a week or so ago, by remote participation, Pat Neary delivered a comment. And Pat Neary is an outgoing member of the Bridgewater Board of Health. And she also expressed support for the sale of raw milk. I will point out that, since you've asked, Counselor, that neither Ms. Neary nor Mr. Dugados, to the best of my knowledge, have the benefit of any training or experience in any medical area. As the public may know, our Board of Health is comprised of three individuals. One individual, by state law, must be a physician. And by our town code, one of those members of the Board of Health may be either a physician or someone active in some aspect of, of medical practice. So I've only heard those comments from two members of the, of the board. Again, Mrs. Neary being an outgoing member. So right now, the Board of Health in Bridgewater is, consists of only two members. And I've not heard a word from the, the third member, nor apparently have any of the members elected to participate publicly in a meeting. Counselor Wood?
Well, I'm not done yet.
Oh, sorry.
So we, we don't have any opinion from the health agent in this town regarding this, this particular issue. And based on the presentation that you presented to us with those statistics, which are alarming, I'm not saying they're not alarming statistics, but I would think something of that severe that may have a negative impact on this, that we would have had an opinion from our, from our Board of Health or from our health agent. Just as was brought up earlier, the simple approval of a, of a road in this town, Counselor Wood asked a legitimate question. Was it properly signed off by the people that need to sign off on that road being approved? And the answer from the town manager was?
Can we leave the, the debate until the article appears?
Well, I wanted, I'm not debating anything. I'm, I'm giving my opinions. I'm not debating anything. So those are my concerns. I think that, although I respect diligent, the due diligence that you did, I do think that was a little bit, little bit much, but...
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Wood?
I, I will say I appreciate the presentation. For many, material like this is, comes under what we say at work, TLDR, too long, didn't read. And people miss some of the details that are coming out in, in this area. I, I will withhold comments until we get to committee. I'd like to report on the committee discussion that we had. We, independently, you and I had come to committee with similar material. And I, I will say that there is not any abundance of information that counters any of this material in your presentation with, yes, we must have raw milk because it's so healthy, it's going to cure X, Y, and Z. And, and so I think you gave a, although it may appear to be lopsided, if you start searching and Googling raw milk in the U.S., in Europe, in Canada, you'll find much of the same material being presented. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Moore?
Maybe just a final comment. I think as this discussion continues, I know there was a presentation about the desire to sell raw milk. I didn't necessarily hear anything about the benefit. Like what is, what is the reason? We're not even sure we want to do it. I would love to just sort of hear more about the business driver that, that is behind this. The, the second thing I would say is I would caution us about making opinions based on the fact that someone in Bridgewater didn't weigh in. I think if we're going to talk about credentials, we should look at the credentials of everyone in those reports, and I guarantee you, those credentials are good. And the same thing with Massachusetts. I appreciate the fact that we might not have events in Massachusetts. This isn't an issue that is bounded by borders. So I think it is still relevant to look nationally and maybe globally at what are, what, what are the issues associated with raw milk outside of our borders? Because I think they're still relevant. That doesn't necessarily mean that we don't weigh the other side. But I think if we're going to talk about the facts, we should trust the people that study it, and we should trust the fact that they're studying it across a wide enough population.
Thank you, Counselor. Other further comments from the com- Other further comments from the council or questions? Seeing none?
More, Mr. President. Mr. President?
Yes, Counselor Souza.
The Massachusetts requirements that they have right now, when were they established?
When were they established?
Are we looking at something that's been out there for fifty years, the sales of raw milk? Or is it something that they put together ten years ago? I think that's going to be very relevant, too, because a lot of these reports are more than ten years old. And if, yeah, okay, if twenty-three, thirty years ago, things were happening and if all these rules were put in there and all these procedures that the farmers must follow and all of this has just been implemented ten years ago, for an example, okay? They probably tried to handle a lot of these issues that we've talked about today.
That's also something I would need to research, Counselor. I don't know the answer to that. All righty. If there are no further comments or questions, next item on the agenda is the town manager's report. And I would turn it over to Mr. Dutton.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a report on the Mitchell Elementary School. And actually, since I can share my screen so well, I'll share the screen here in a moment. But project is progressing well. Some slight delays, mostly attributable to electrical delays in shipping, the electrical components and installation of some of the electrical components, but otherwise on schedule. And if you give me just one second, I will share the screen, if I can find it. Currently on schedule, the progress is good. Finishes are going on. Painting, acoustical tile, plumbing fixtures, all the things that you would expect to be being done at this late date. Playground equipment going in, testing and balancing, something that doesn't necessarily happen to such an extent in your residential building. But there's a huge process to test and balance the HVAC systems and the other systems in the building. The Wi-Fi was installed on Friday and in terms of safety is good. And the furniture is on its way. Actually, the furniture is being delivered currently. All right, I'm not so adept. Just some pictures, so you can see some of the progress. The acoustical tile is being set in the grids, you can see on the left. And then the main lobby terrazzo flooring is being polished and finished. Casework is going into the classrooms, including the fixtures, as I had mentioned. Skylights being capped properly and some of the site work, the finished site work going on this week. Utility poles going in, the sidewalk prep. A lot of sidewalks have already been poured. Some of the sidewalks continue to be installed throughout the next two weeks. Yeah, it's too small to see. And I just want to give you sort of the project milestones. Originally, the substantial completion date, which you see here, is August 15th. Originally, it was August 8th. That has been pushed out only because the MSBA requires a certain amount of time to complete its commissioning of the building. It hires a separate firm that does a separate commissioning for MSBA purposes, and they required X number of weeks. And that pushed the substantial completion out to August 15th. And as the OPM on the project said at last night's meeting, substantial completion is essentially the issuance of the CO. So that is the target date for the issuance of the CO. Furniture installation starts on Monday and will continue for a couple of weeks. Vendors will be in to do training on systems. Occupancy, the move, in other words, moving items into the building from the current Mitchell at the middle will be the week of the 22nd. Right now, there's a taxpayer tour, resident tour scheduled for August 27th. That date is not fixed in stone just yet because we're making sure that we don't have any other delays before we sort of plow ahead with that date. First day of school is either the 6th or the 7th, and ribbon cutting ceremony is scheduled for September 10th. So that is where we are right now. We've got two other school building committee meetings scheduled for August 8th, August 29th. And as always, the public is certainly welcome to attend. They've been very efficient meetings thus far. We've got a great, great committee. I will point out that this committee has met, as of next month, will have met seventy-one times on this project. And that does not include all the meetings that have taken place with multiple others, including, you know, the special committees within the building committee. Certainly, the superintendent and the school staff have spent many more hours in meetings than just the seventy-one school building committee meetings. So I just wanted to point that out. Otherwise, the project is going well. You can see here, in 2019, we were projecting an $81.14 million budget. Our current budget is $67,107, rounded up, $67,108. So we've seen some significant cost reductions when we went out to bid. We also saw a very favorable interest environment for municipal bonds. So we bonded the most, really, all the project quite a while ago, which is not common. But so we locked in very favorable rates for taxpayers over the next 25, 30 years. So that is essentially the report. All is good and coming down to the wire. But contractor, the owner's project manager, and the architect are all working very closely together to get the job over the finish line and open for the school year. But happy to answer questions.
Thank you. Mr. Dutton? Yes, Counselor Moore?
Thank you, Mr. President. Through you to the town manager. Looking at the milestone sheet, I didn't see the lease agreement. And I don't think I did at least. And I think by our district agreement, this is a leased property back to the district. So I was wondering if maybe you could just speak to where that stands?
We have not executed that. That is not really part of the building process. This is really part of the building process. This is the OPM's report. So the OPM wouldn't be involved in, you know, negotiating or executing a lease agreement. But we are working on that.
Great. Thank you.
Are there further questions for the town manager? Mr. Wood?
Is that schedule and milestone up on the website where people can find it? I've had a few questions about the schedule. I like the taxpayer tour on the 27th. I was asked about when the move, looks like the 22nd is going to happen, and your first day of school is on track. So if you could find a way to highlight that on the webpage, I think we can all direct people to that location if they have questions.
It is on the school building webpage, but we'll put it on the town webpage as well.
Thank you. Further questions for the town manager? I see none. I would just thank you, Mr. Dutton. It's, I think, very gratifying and certainly very rewarding for the members of the school building committee to see this effort through to completion and with really no serious setbacks whatsoever to date. It's truly a testament to their hard work and the great amount of due diligence that they have performed in their duties. I thank you. Moving on, we have no discussions scheduled for this evening. Committee reports. Yes, Counselor Wood?
Counselor Columbaadis is not here. So I'd like to report on the Economic Community and Economic Development Committee discussion on the raw milk process and why I came back with what you see before you is a two-to-one with no recommendation. It was, I had originally asked for the Board of Health to come in, and I think Mr. Chase did, too. I was more interested in not the health aspects of raw milk, but how our Board of Health was going to monitor the farm and the handling of the raw milk. And if you read other literature related to this, you'll know that for milk handling, you have to bring the temperature down from the cow's temperature to forty degrees within two hours. It has to go into sterilized milk tanks. It has to remain at forty degrees. And for the sale of raw milk, in the rules and regulations, it has to remain under forty degrees. That's critical to stop the growth of the bacteria because pasteurization will kill that bacteria. And that's why the handling of pasteurized milk is much different. I was interested in what the Board of Health was going to set up as a plan for monitoring. Turns out, the Board of Health has no purview in this case. They would not monitor the production or anything on the raw milk. That's a state function. Where you have, you know, restaurant inspections and other inspections done periodically, the state drops by about once a month to the farm that's producing raw milk and takes a look at that point. And it will do some testing about once a month. And that's in the regulations. I find that kind of concerning myself, but that's why I wanted the Board of Health to... The second piece, and the more important piece to this, is during our discussion and why I came back with no recommendation, was that the town council does not have to give permission to a farm to sell raw milk. There is no regulation in town right now by the Board of Health that restricts the sale of raw milk. It is a state function. The farm, and we're not just talking about Hanson Farm, it can be any farm or any farm in the future in Bridgewater that has to go through this. So it can be, and we're not just talking cows, the state regulations also cover goat's milk. And so you could talk about Peterson's Farm, if they wanted to get into it, or Wildwood Farm, or some farm in the future. I've tried looking up the definition of a farm. How do you become a farm? And, you know, how many cows can you have on your property if you wanted to become a raw milk farmer? It's ambiguous about that. But so the committee discussion and why I came back with no recommendation is because the council really has no action to take here. We could set up legislation to stop the sale of raw milk, but we don't have to do anything to start the sale of raw milk. It's a certification through the state. You have to get your herd certified. You have to have your rabies shots, tuberculosis shots. You have to have inspections, certification of dairy products. A lot of these other farms are already in the dairy business when they start selling raw milk. And it's, the process is handled by the Department in the state, and I can't remember the full name of it. But there is no discussion that we really need to have here to allow Hanson Farm or any other farm to start the process to sell raw milk. So I think it was my hope and others that the sponsor would actually withdraw this from the council level, withdraw it from consideration because it's not needed and it doesn't fit into how we give permission or restrict permission. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. I appreciate that. I as well attended that Community and Economic Development Committee meeting. And I reported to the committee at that time and to the general public much of what you've indicated, the fact that there is nothing that the town needs to do to enable the sale of raw milk. It is strictly, as you've said correctly, a state registration function. And it is apparent to us that there is no Board of Health regulation in Bridgewater currently that would restrict or prohibit the sale of raw milk. And as I reported at that meeting to the committee and to the public, which in fact included Mr. and Mrs. Hanson at that meeting remotely, that they or any other farm in Bridgewater is perfectly able right now, tomorrow, to go to the state to apply for a certificate of registration and to, upon approval thereof, be able to sell raw milk in Bridgewater. So accordingly, we did extend to Counselor Souza at the committee level the offer to, if you will, to withdraw his proposed order. Nonetheless, it was advanced to a vote. And the vote was two-to-one to return it to the council with no recommendation for the reasons that Counselor Wood has just indicated. So that is my contribution to the committee report on the Community and Economic Development Committee agenda item of raw milk. Moving on, legislation for action.
Raw milk.
Raw milk. What a surprise. Order FY 22-056, the sale of raw milk. Counselor Souza, you are the sponsor. You are invited to offer comments?
Thank you. I asked for a couple of pieces of information that we did not have, myself either. And you said you would look it up and bring it back. Okay. And we have had so much negativity tonight in reporting, okay, against, I should say. I think it's important that we get those figures and bring them out and get them out into the public before we go any further with this order. That's my point. I think I'd like to make a motion that we just table it until all that information is back in. We bring it up again at the next meeting, present that information. So everybody who's listening in or anybody who's attending, they will hear that side of it as well.
So your recommendation is to continue the matter to a future meeting?
Yes, until that information is collected and brought in.
Mr. President, point of information?
Yes. Counselor Jordan?
Yeah, thank you. Through you to the town attorney. Mr. Rollins, with what Counselor Wood just brought up, is this in fact something that we can move forward on if it's state-regulated and state-allowed? I don't want everyone to go through this exercise of getting all the data just to find out at the end of the day, the order that we put through is unenforceable because it's allowed at the state level.
Well, so are you talking about what Counselor Wood mentioned relative to the fact that it came back without a recommendation? Or are you talking about the fact that it's already allowed at the state level and because of that, there's really no action that the town of Bridgewater needs to take relative to this?
Right, because as the discussion was going on, I was trying to look up if there were any guidance on local regulation. I can't find any.
No, there isn't. So it's covered under Mass. general laws, and then Mass. general laws cites to the CMR regulations, which lay out the process by which a certificate could be ascertained under certain conditions by an applicant. So essentially, everything is already covered under Mass. general laws for a farm to apply to do this.
Right.
So Mr. Wood's point is well-taken, that there really is no action that has to be taken by our town relative to this, to allow anyone to try to apply to the state and the commissioner to receive their certificate.
So I guess the point of the matter I have is that, for the lack of a better term, I think this whole thing is a moot point.
Yeah, I mean, I don't disagree with that.
Because if we were, in all intents and purposes, if we were to ban raw milk sales in Bridgewater, a farm could go, apply for a certificate, sell, as long as they follow the rules and regulations, we would have no power to enforce our ban, correct?
Well, I think that's a different question. So what we have before us is to allow, right, for this?
Okay.
And so I don't think it requires our town to give permission for anyone to produce raw milk. So I want to stick with just that question because the other thing is a totally different question.
Gotcha.
So the question, I think, that's before the council is, are these farms allowed to do that? And the answer is, if they comply with Mass. general laws and receive a certificate from the commissioner, yes, they can, regardless of... the commissioner, yes, they can, regardless of where we're at. So I do think Mr. Wood's point is well taken, that there is no action that you all have to take to allow local farms to apply and receive these certificates. I think they're covered under Mass. general laws, and I think they're covered under the CMR regulations about what that process looks like.
Okay, thank you.
I'd like to second Counselor Souza's motion to table the item, which was his original motion.
Till we get the information back.
Well, tabling is different than postponing.
Yeah, so your initial...
You made the motion to table.
His initial motion was to table.
And I'm seconding that.
Mr. Chase clarified as a continuance, so I'm not sure what the initial...
Continuance is what we're looking for. What I'm trying to do is, we're just trying to listen to the other side. The questions were, what is happening in the state of Massachusetts under the governance of the program that the state currently has in force? And we want the people to hear that. And then, you know, go from there.
Mr. President?
So, Mr. Souza, your motion is what?
To continue this until we get the information that you said you would get back for us pertaining to the current farmers that are in the state of Massachusetts selling raw milk under the control of the state and has been any illnesses reported.
A second for discussion.
All right, go ahead, Counselor.
I mean, I'm not going to support the continuance because I don't think we need to, Counselor Souza. I think that whether this is voted up or down, the question is to allow them to do it. We don't need to have anything to allow the farms in Bridgewater to do this. They can do it like it's been presented.
Right.
But I would say we should keep this on the agenda under discussion items if we want to keep having presentations about it. That's fine. I think we can get to your... Your questions can be answered without this being on the agenda through a discussion item. So that's why I'm not going to support the continuance of the order because we don't need to vote on this. But to satisfy your questions and some of mine, you know, let's keep the discussion going, though.
Okay. So if I was to withdraw this this evening, would the discussion come on the other information that I've asked for? Because that's all we really need.
Yeah.
It's not a half-hour, 45-minute program.
Right.
It's something that'd probably take five minutes. But I think it's something that we should hear.
All right. So I will personally undertake to attempt to answer those questions for you. And to the extent necessary, I'll confer with you privately to make sure that we have a mutual understanding of exactly what it is you're looking for. And I suspect that I can provide whatever answer I receive at the next council meeting in August.
Okay.
Mr. President?
Yes. Mr. George.
Yeah, as long as it's in order, I'd like to make a motion to table the order.
Well, I think we first have to... Was there a motion and a second on the motion to continue already? I think there was because there was discussion.
Right.
So I think we need to do the vote on the motion to continue, and then, once there's a vote on that, we can hear the motion to table.
Are you sure the motion to table doesn't supersede the motion to the other motion?
You know, it might under parliamentary procedure. I don't have my Roberts rules with me.
I do.
You do, good. I need my cheat sheet. If it's precedential...
Precedence of motion.
There we go. If it's table first, then you guys can vote the motion to table, obviously.
The order of precedence of motion shall be as follows. And number one is motion to adjourn. Two is motion to recess. Three is raise a question of privilege. Four, to lay on the table.
Okay, perfect.
I'll second Counselor George's motion to table.
All right, so we have a motion and a second to table the discussion on this proposed order.
I will add for parliamentary information, I believe it requires a two-thirds vote to table an item.
It does.
All right, thank you.
Are you tabling it to a date certain?
No, tabling.
Table...
No, tabling.
Makes it done.
Tabling.
And, Mr. President, if I could add to the reason I'm... Direction?
We don't need to act on this. That's the point.
Oh, that accomplishes that.
Well...
We have a motion and a second. Is there further discussion on the proposed...
Yeah.
Yes, Counselor George.
Mr. President? Yes. My motion is to table the order. My intent is not to stop the discussion around the pros and cons of raw milk. I do agree with bringing this to light. I would assume also that would give the opportunity for the proponents to bring the facts to light, educate the consumers, and let them move forward. Thank you.
All right, very good. So just with respect to the order itself, we have a motion and a second to table this proposed order. No further discussion, Counselors?
Just one question. Just to reiterate that farms in this town can move forward to sell raw milk if they wish to. The fact that we're still throwing this around and bringing it back for... It looks like it might get tabled. Businesses can move forward if they want to. This council can... What the council is doing cannot and should not affect what they want to do with raw milk, unless there was something before us and we'd get it to that discussion if we did, if it was to ban it. But that's not before us. So this does not stop a business or dairy farm that has the right for this license to move forward to sell raw milk. They can move forward with this. Am I right or am I wrong?
Correct. He's correct, I believe, Counselor.
Okay.
As long as they have a certificate from the state.
Well, they can move forward. They can move forward. There's a process.
They can move forward to apply for the certificate, right. But I don't want there to be a misconception that any of us here are saying that they can produce raw milk.
I didn't say produce.
Yeah.
I said they can move forward.
For the application for a certificate. That's right. Yep.
So we have...
Talked about it all year long.
Does the certificate process require any input from the town?
No. No, it's from the Commissioner of Agriculture, and there's very specific CMRs on, as Mr. Wood pointed out, like the temperatures and the type of tanks that they have to hold them in, and it's a process. And then they have to display it. So once someone is... Does receive the certificate in their room that has the holding tanks, they actually have to display the license. So we'll be able to check it, all right? So if we find out there's... That could be an issue, but that's neither here nor there.
So I think we have before us a motion and a second to table discussion on the proposed ordinance, proposed order. Could I have a roll call vote, please?
Sure. Mr. Souza?
Tabling it without the discussion. All right, yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
And Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Six in favor, zero opposed.
Thank you.
I hope we don't see that on the agenda again.
We have further legislation for action. Order FY 22-057, order of taking, and I will defer to the town manager.
Mr. President, let me yet again pull up a map for your perusal. No, I can't find it. Give me just a second. While I'm pulling this up, the lot in question is... Or the small piece of property in question is at the corner of High Street and Wall, Roughly 850 square feet on the corner, and it's designed so that the road configuration can be better suited to sightlines or better accommodate sightlines. So this is Wall. This is High Street and the High Street Bridge there. This is the outlined piece of property. We've had several conversations with the owners, and they are not opposed to the taking. There is an appraisal that we've done, which I believe shows that the taking would be a reduction in the property value of roughly $6,000, which will be paid when and if the High Street Bridge and dam removal project is commenced. So that is it, right there, roughly 850 square feet. And as I say, the owner is well aware, and we've had several meetings with them.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Dutton. I note that the Community and Economic Development Committee met on June 30th and voted three to zero to recommend adoption of this order. I would entertain a motion for approval.
So moved.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. And if I could ask, please, for a roll call vote.
It has to be referred to advertising.
Advertising.
I'm sorry. It is to be referred to advertising. Thank you very much.
Motion to move to advertising.
Second.
No need to vote again. I think we have something further for the town manager.
Well, we have to vote on that.
Yeah.
We'll do a vote for consent to advertising.
Yep.
Then we'll have a roll call vote, please.
Yep. Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
And Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Six in favor, zero opposed.
Thank you. Order FY 22-075, ratification of the amended agreement for the Bristol Plymouth Regional School District. And I'll defer to the town manager.
Mr. President, although you've got a red line version in your packet that shows a lot of changes, most of those are... Most of those changes are wording and grammar changes and so forth. The major change that the council is... Or that the Bristol Plymouth Regional School District is really asking you to approve is the admission of Free Town as a member of the regional district. And so I would recommend, certainly recommend that. And quite frankly, the more towns that join the district, the more towns share in the... Both the assessment and the capital cost of the new Bristol Plymouth. So I would encourage you to approve that.
Thank you, Mr. Dutton. Yes, Mr. Wood?
Can I ask questions before we make any motions?
Yes, please.
Through you to the town attorney. I think I asked this before, but I don't recall. We cannot make any amendments to this document. Is that right?
Right.
Okay. And the second question goes to what you just... The comment you just made, which is the inclusion of the additional district, the additional town, changes the district structures within the BP structure. So how does that impact our... Any obligation for payment for the new school?
To the extent that Free Town is included, it would reduce the... Our capital contribution by some amount, depending upon the student population that Free Town sends.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I note that this order was not referred to any committee. 14 days have elapsed, therefore it may be finally considered this evening. I would entertain a motion for approval.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. And I will ask, please, for...
Can I ask just one more question?
Oh, sorry, please, Counselor, go right ahead.
Through you to the town manager. I guess similar to the last question of our costs going down, does this mean that students from Bridgewater that want to attend... There are now fewer students that could attend because we're making space for another town? I guess I'm trying to sort of weigh that seesaw.
In theory, yes. In practice, I think Free Town, you'll find, sends very limited number of students. Bridgewater traditionally has sent a fair number of students. We've got, I think, 100 or more, I believe.
So we're not expecting a big impact on the offering to our students?
No. Last time I looked at the projections that we... That both Bristol Plymouth and Bridgewater-Ranham provided, there wasn't a huge... There was... Certainly wasn't a huge increase in the number of Bristol Plymouth folks, and there was not a huge increase in the regional district.
Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Wood?
For a future meeting, not necessarily tonight, but we all know that Ranham just voted down their debt exclusion on the BP. I'm not sure when the Bridgewater vote's going to come up. I think this changes the picture a little bit with the numbers, and I would like to, as a counselor, understand the financial numbers a little bit better prior to us seeing the offer to, you know, offer for an election or a ballot piece. So in the next meeting or two, could you maybe put together, you know, an update on that?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you. Further questions? Seeing none, I would ask, please, for a roll call vote.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
And Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Six in favor, zero opposed.
Moving on to resolution FY 22-010, acknowledgment of the acceptance of remediation waste at Maryland's Landing land reclamation project. To the town manager, please.
Mr. President, this is another of... A number of DEP resolutions that the council has passed over the last several years. As you may remember, Maryland's Landing is a capped landfill. The attempt is to fill a certain number of acres on the... It straddles the Bridgewater-Halifax line. The Bridgewater side is looking to build the elevation ultimately to house a solar... I believe, to house a solar facility, solar farm. And so the fill is coming in. It's reclamation from projects throughout eastern Massachusetts, and it is all essentially governed by DEP regulations. It's very carefully tested, and every load is tested before it gets added to the pile, so to speak. And so DEP, every step of the way, asks for both acceptance or acknowledgment of what's going on from both Halifax and Bridgewater. And Halifax, as I can tell you, Halifax has already accepted this particular order through their Board of Selectmen and Board of Health. And obviously, it comes to you as the elected body in Bridgewater.
Well, thank you. I note that the Community and Economic Development Committee voted three to zero to recommend this action at their meeting on June 30th. Yes, Counselor Wood?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Thank you.
And then discuss that.
Second for discussion.
A second, thank you. We have a motion and a second for approval. I would ask, any further discussion? Counselor Wood?
Yeah. I wasn't sure when we were discussing exactly where Maryland's Landing was. But if you do a Google phone lookup of it, Maryland's Landing, Bridgewater, takes you right to the spot. You can clearly see the field behind. You can clearly see where the entrance is and where we're talking about. And we talked with a number of people throughout the process about what was going to be taken in there and how it was going to be disposed of. I did make a joke during the meeting that it was right down the street from the new Halifax Marijuana Shop, so it'd be convenient for that, but that's secondary. So it's... I think it's a good project. It's in a very... It's in the shared area between Bridgewater and Halifax. And as you heard, you know, filling it will allow a solar park to go in there at some point.
Thank you, Counselor. Yes, Counselor Moore?
Thank you. Maybe through you to the town manager. I just want to make sure I understand the project itself. So if I understand it from the reading, we are bringing in contaminated soil that at one point was contaminated, but now is safe, and we're using it to reconstruct the land back to what it originally was. Is that right? Just help me sort of, I guess, maybe understand. What is the benefit? What are we...
So as I mentioned, on the Halifax side and spilling over somewhat on the Bridgewater side is a capped landfill. That capped landfill, as DEP requires, is constant... That capped landfill, as DEP requires, is constantly monitored and constantly tested. On the Bridgewater side, the effort is to raise the elevation to match the capped landfill, so it creates adequate acreage in order to put a substantial solar field. So it's really, it's not bringing it back to what it originally was necessarily. It's being able to create acreage at the same elevation, essentially.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion? Yes, councillor Gallagher?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Mr. President. Through you to the town manager. Mike, is there going to be a cost to us associated with this?
No, in fact, there's absolutely no cost. We do, and they have generously offered to allow the town to use the facility at no cost. So it does cost other people some amount of money to be able to use that facility. We are allowed to use that facility for no cost.
No liability to us either.
And no liability.
And do we know what Halifax did on April 26th? Did they?
They approved it.
Okay.
Yep. They approved that.
Thank you. Further discussion? We have a motion and a second for approval. Could I have a roll call vote, please?
Sure. Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
And Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Six in favor, zero opposed.
Thank you. Resolution FY 22-011, amend September 2022 town council meeting date. The explanation I would offer simply is that it was determined that the scheduled meeting date for one of our council meetings, regularly scheduled council meetings in September, would occur on the date of the state election primary, and we thought that that would be inconvenient, at least, if not problematic. And so the recommendation I have made is for the rescheduling of the date from September 6th to September 13th, 2022. This had been introduced at our last meeting. Fourteen days have elapsed. It was not recommended to, for referral to any committee, and therefore we can consider it finally this evening. I would entertain a motion for approval.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there discussion on the matter? Seeing none, I would ask for a roll call vote.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
And Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Six in favor, zero opposed.
Thank you. That's the conclusion of our legislation for action. There is no old businesses this evening. We do have two items of new business. The first is Resolution FY 22-012, a resolution adopting the town of Bridgewater, Mass Hazard Mitigation Plan 2022. And once again, I would please defer to the town manager for comment.
Mr. President, the Hazard Mitigation Plan completed in conjunction with OCPC is a plan that essentially guides us in how we avoid multiple natural hazards and manmade hazards. It is a plan that's been completed. OCPC has spearheaded several, a number of public meetings and also several public hearings. They have shared drafts and now have a final version that needs to be adopted by the council. There is, we will make sure that you have a copy of it, obviously, but we, there is some urgency to the plan itself because we need to have that approved by your meeting in August in order to get reimbursed, I believe it's $18,000 from the state that helped us complete the plan. So it is there for your approval. It's completed, and as I say, we will make sure you have copies of it shortly so that you can review that.
Thank you very much. I would entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
A motion for?
For?
We get to move it someplace, right?
Senate to committee?
A motion for referral to the Community and Economic Development Committee?
Sounds good.
I would only caution that, as I mentioned, we have to make sure that Community and Economic Development meets because there is a deadline. The next meeting is our deadline for having it passed.
August.
Really?
Is it, is it your suggestion that it may be unnecessary for a committee hearing?
That is my suggestion. You could keep it right within the council and not refer it to committee.
All right. Then I would accept that, and I would suggest that we do, in fact, retain this at the council level for consideration at our, at our next meeting in August.
We still got a motion, right? We're going to withdraw the second?
I'll make that motion. Second there, councillor?
Yes.
Very good. Discussion? Seeing none? If we could have a roll call vote, please.
Sure. Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
And Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Six in favor, zero opposed.
Thank you. And proposed ordinance FY 22-025, general ordinance, chapter 50, buildings, article two, naming of town buildings and facilities. And I will defer to councillor Moore for comment.
Sure. So maybe first, some background. I think we have at least two and maybe three potential facility naming requests on the horizon. The Mitchell School, although everyone, I think, knows and assumes it will be the Mitchell School, there isn't a formal process for that. And then there's also, I've received some discussion around the old high school. And so I, as I understand it, there's no formal process today in Bridgewater for reviewing and authorizing town facility naming. So that means that we're at the risk of names being changed. We're at the risk of confusion over who can change names and create names. There's the traditional risk of naming being done for personal political gain. There's some confusion around philanthropic naming. And then probably, you know, the primary thing is potentially some confusion around how somebody requests naming and who acts on that request. So I'm proposing this just to give us a formal policy to review those. The language I put in likely overshoots our needs a little bit. For me personally, I'm really just pushing for some language that helps us establish a policy for buildings and parks. But when I looked around at other towns, most of them included things like street names and some other town-owned assets. So I did include that more for discussion than out of a drive for that. So just to maybe talk about how this would work if we passed it, what this is proposing is that if somebody thinks we should name a building in town, they would submit that naming request along with some required fields, you know, who is the person or activity that this is about, you know, where is the building, that sort of thing. They submit that to the town manager. The town manager then reviews it, does some research to understand financial implications and other implications, and then would bring that back to the council for consideration. The council would review it and allow for public comment to make sure that the public had the opportunity to weigh in on a naming event. And then at a future meeting, at the next meeting, the town council would vote. And so today, we don't have a policy like this. The Mitchell School is the Mitchell School because we wrote that on a document earlier. But if somebody came along next week and said, I want to name it something different, there isn't a policy that we would use to react to that. So I'm certainly in favor of keeping it the Mitchell School and would love to just put that on paper. Just closing out a little bit, the old high school, I have kids there, and when you ask where they're going, they say the old high school or the old Mitchell at the middle. It is a part of our school system. I would love to entertain ideas to give its own identity along with the school committee. So I think having a formal process where we could, we could do that would be a good thing for the town.
Thank you, councillor. I would entertain a motion for?
Mr. President, can I?
Yes, councillor George.
Just a point of information to Mr. Moore. If I'm wrong, but in regards to naming schools, there is a process that the school committee goes through before they decide naming a building or a school, correct?
So the interesting thing is the school committee can name schools that they own, which is the high school. This is my understanding, but I would encourage our town attorney or town manager to correct me. In the case of all of the schools that are actually in the town, the elementary schools, for us and for Rainham, those are still owned by Bridgewater but leased back to the school, and they don't have naming rights. We have not given them naming rights as part of that agreement. So they are technically still town-owned buildings, so we are the body that would name them. That is my understanding.
I don't know if we'll have an answer today, and maybe this is for a committee discussion, but I don't particularly think that is accurate in regards to control over the buildings in each town by the school committee. Obviously, the high school is jointly owned by the district, but I think there is some specific language in regards to the individual buildings in the town, and it's still under the purview of the school committee.
So I think, I think we should get an answer on this, but my understanding is, although our district agreement asks us to create a lease so that there is official language, I don't believe that we've done that in the past. So I don't think there is currently an agreement, a formal agreement, that states something one way or the other. So this would be part of the action to sort of clean up that so everyone's on the same page.
Are you saying that we've never had a lease? I'm a little confused.
That's my understanding, yes.
Mr. President, through you to Mr. Dutton, even though I know it's dated, you have leases for the town buildings, correct? The schools, I should say, with the district, correct?
I didn't hear the first part, councillor, but I think you're asking if we have leases with the, with the district for the schools. And I don't, it is referenced in the regional agreement, but I don't believe we have ever executed an actual lease. I could be wrong, but I haven't found one.
I think we'll have to do some research on that. I know those documents are dated because we've worked on them for a long time, but my understanding and my recollection is there is, there is a lease out there that we're going to need, we're going to need to review as well. And again, we can bring this, I'm not really comfortable with us having the final say over schools when I believe, truly believe it's the school committee's responsibility to go through a process of naming a school or a gym or a library. I mean, that's, that's part of the reason why we have a school committee, and I'm just a little concerned that we're starting to pull some of their authority into our purview, which I would not be in favor of. So that's just my comment. I know we're going to refer it off, but I do have some concerns with this in regards to the schools.
I'll make a motion to, sorry, I'll make a motion to move it to Rules and Procedures, and then that committee can do that research.
On second.
We have a motion and a second to refer the matter to the Rules and Procedures Committee. Councillor Moore?
So just a final discussion. So I know I used the schools as two examples. I do think even outside of the schools, and we should certainly get the feedback on that, there are other buildings in town that could be candidates for naming, it could be where we could recognize people, there could be confusion over who names them in recreation, et cetera. So I think it would be good for us to just have a policy that we've agreed to on how that happens. So even independent of the school question, I would encourage the committee to look at it just as a town policy.
Thank you, councillor. We have a motion and a second, and if there's no further discussion, I would ask, please, for a roll call vote.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
And Mr. Wood?
Yep.
Six in favor, zero opposed.
Thank you very much. We'll move on to citizen comments. If there are any citizens who care to offer comments, please step forward. Please go right ahead. Mrs. Hanson?
Janet Hanson, Pleasant Street. Just a couple of quick, hopefully quick. Mr. Wood, you had mentioned about the house on Main Street that no one seems to be, you know, up in arms about that. That's not necessarily true because when I was at one of the meetings, I think it was a planning board meeting, there was concern when they found out that that house may be torn down, and I heard it before, I was like, oh, it's such a, you know, it's a shame that that house would be torn down. I think part of the reason it's not well-publicized. So you're not going to get a reaction in this town unless it's out there. So that would be, but I do feel that there was some concern about it. It wasn't totally, no one cared, but I think it's because no one knows about it. Mr. Moore, you had, I think you were asking about what's the business benefit of selling raw milk or what the gain is, something like that. I did send a letter, and I'm hoping you guys, sorry, you guys, the county councillor, got my two emails. But right now, there's about 100, 101 dairy farms in Massachusetts, left in Massachusetts, and approximately 30% of those sell raw milk. By selling raw milk, these farms are able to stay alive. It helps keep open space. Cows can graze, et cetera. The price of milk you pay in the store is not reflective of what a farmer gets. The farmer gets nothing. And they do all the work, seven days a week, 16 hours a day. Never mind the cows get, have to work. But they get about $20 per 100 pounds of milk produced, which is only 11.62 gallons. That's before all the expenses they have, the trucking expenses that they have to pay, fees, handlers, feed for the cows, et cetera. So farmers don't get much. But with raw milk, there is a lot of expense because they have to do a lot of upgrade to their farms to meet the regulations. But they can, and people will pay it, they get, I wrote it down, but they get like six to, they can get six to 10 or, I don't know, would you say, six dollars a gallon or four? Yeah, six to $10 a gallon. Whereas a farmer who does all that other, you know, that does it for producing, for pasteurization, you know, gets nothing. So there is an economical advantage. There is a lot of expense because they have insurance. So just want to let you know. And just the love of doing it, farming, you know. And just to mention, years ago, my husband was told that Bridgewater, by a Board of Health member, this was many years ago, that it was banned in Massachusetts, raw milk. So he never pursued it because it was banned. He didn't think to look into it because he was trusting that, well, that's the way it is. It's a shame because he could have been doing raw milk for years if he wanted to. And that's a lot of lost time. Now, you know, a lot of things have changed in life, and like, there's no dairy farms left in Bridgewater. We have some cows, but it's not a dairy farm. But it doesn't have to be a mass production farm. It can be a couple of goats. It can be a couple of cows. Bridgewater doesn't have a space to have a lot of dairy farms. So you don't have to be worried that it's going to be a mass production in Bridgewater, and only people that really want the milk is going to get it. They're going to understand there is risk. No one said there isn't, but there's a lot of regulations, and you just have to know how to, if you've never farmed, you don't know what goes into it. So I just wanted to answer that, and I won't go into everything that Mr. Chase put because it is, was very one-sided. So we do need to present, if there was any ever consideration of this town of banning the sale of raw milk, that would be so unfair to have people go through all that and then say, we're going to ban it. That's, that's a big expense for a farm to go through. So you really have to look at the pros and cons and how Massachusetts does it, not the whole United States. And if you look at the numbers for the whole United States, that's not very big compared to other outbreaks. And as Mr. Souza said, there's lettuce and other, and Mr. Gallagher, there's other foods that have been worse. So, and you don't have to drink it if you don't want to. So I just want to make sure that this is never come to a ban. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Hanson. Any further comments? Dr. Hunt?
Carlton Hunt, Austin Street. I'm going to continue the milk story a bit. I appreciate greatly the presentation of effects and impact. Unfortunately, there are missing, I'm a scientist, I've got two advanced degrees, I'm a practicing scientist for over 40 years, retired for 11, still trying to be a scientist. There are several things that were missing from the presentation, and this is a critique, not a criticism. Number one, the prevalence of milk-caused health issues was not discussed. That means, how prevalent was it within a population of milk drinkers? If you had 100,000 raw milk drinkers? If you had 100,000 raw milk drinkers, the prevalence could be 10%. That's probably not good. It could be 1%. So, the prevalence of those impacts from raw milk are not quite as represented in those studies, which actually only looked at the incident, not the incidents, but the, it was 50% of a certain outbreak. That outbreak was driven by other factors, but that outbreak was also relative to how many milk drinkers, raw milk drinkers there were. That was never in the discussion at all. So, once it's incidence of it, there is also the prevalence. There are no risk assessments presented in the discussion. As some of the folks in this council understand, risk assessment is a key element of determining what the risk is of drinking raw milk. These were all studies about when something happened. It's not a risk assessment. So, if there's any information on the risk assessment, I think it should be presented to the public. And the third thing I'll say is the context. The context is, as I said earlier, the number of raw milk drinkers was never part of any of those studies. It was always based on an event or a series of events, and where milk was causing that. So, like I said, if you had 100,000 raw milk drinkers, actually, how many of those that had an impact were in fact part of that population? Thank you very much. I appreciate the information, and as a scientist, I understand the difficulty of translating scientific information to public presentations. I've done it a few times, failed a few, made a few successes, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Hunt. Any further public comment? Yes, please.
My name is Pam Madden, I live on Varid Drive, and I'm going to mention something about raw milk, surprise, surprise. Just as kind of an opposing view to the presentation tonight, I would say that if we strictly followed all food safety guidelines, we wouldn't eat raw cookie dough, raw oysters, or medium rare steak. I don't think people want to live that way. I would argue that a lot of what we eat isn't safe. We hear all the time about recalls and illnesses caused by lettuce, meat, and other foods. These are usually produced by large corporations. In terms of the history of pasteurization, whoops, where's my, hold on just a second, I lost my. Pasteurized milk, meaning it's heated over 160 degrees Fahrenheit, is a relatively new product. Pasteurization came about less than a century ago, and is a reaction to milk produced in urban dairies from cows kept in confinement and fed industrial waste largely from distilleries. Contamination of such milk is controlled by heating it to kill all bacteria, both the good and the bad. Eventually, the urban dairies disappeared, but pasteurization remained. Now, there's a growing number of people learning that fresh milk from nearby dairy farms can be a good thing. We're lucky to live in Massachusetts, which has detailed regulations and oversight. I would feel more comfortable drinking raw milk that is produced here in town than consuming food that's been grown in one location, processed in another, and then shipped around the country all in an effort to make as much profit as possible. I would just hope in the future that efforts by the town council are spent on the long list of issues that are viewed as priorities by Bridgewater residents, and hopefully not concerned about raw milk. Thank you.
Thank you. Further comments from the public? Yes, please, sir.
Of course, all these studies can be used, if somebody wants certain results, they're paying somebody to do these studies, in my opinion, on both sides of the article. And in comment to the previous speaker, there are tens of millions of people that drink raw milk in the United States. I don't know if it's 100 million, but it's in the tens of millions. And then, one comment on Mr. Chase's presentation, in that the Whittier Farms article, that was pasteurized milk that caused those problems with those people. The milk was processed, and after they processed it, they ran it in the chocolate and coffee flavoring without pasteurizing it again. And that's my understanding of what happened to that milk with Whittier Farms. I think if you, it did say "pasteurized" on the screen, for Whittier Farms Listeria outbreak. And that was the only one I've heard of in Massachusetts, other than another dairy adding too much vitamin D to the milk and causing issues with somebody else after it was pasteurized. So, and like my wife said, the Board of Health came up and inspected the barn back in 2009, I think, three members, and they all said that there was a regulation that prohibited raw milk sale in Bridgewater. And they said that they would go along with the state, they would change that if the state gave the approval to it. They wanted to test the bedding, the hay, they wanted to test everything, so it made it almost ridiculous to even think about it when they came and inspected the barn. So, I'd kind of forgotten about it, but every time I sell a cow to another dairy, I'm seeing my hopes of getting into this going further and further away, so that's all I'm saying. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hanson. Further public comment? Seeing none, we'll turn to council comment, and I think I'll begin this evening with Counselor Wood.
Thank you. Let's stay on the milk subject for just a minute, just a minute, just a minute. You know, I don't go into something like this blindly. The scientific research is there. What was presented tonight was really just the surface of what's there. The studies of things that are, you know, the depth of the studies are very, very good. So, what wasn't presented tonight, which I had found in my research, is that prior to, I think it was 1938, and I can cite the resource if you need it, 25% of foodborne illnesses were caused by raw milk. So, that speaks to the percentage of raw milk drinkers, and how often people got sick and what they got sick by. You can't boil lettuce. You can boil raw milk, not boil it, but you know what I mean. And, you know, you can set up all sorts of analogies. Hey, I played with lawn darts when I was a kid, and I didn't get killed, so lawn darts must be good. You know, it's foolish to make that comparison, but it is the same thing. If properly handled, I agree, raw milk immediately consumed or soon after, and kept at the low temperature so that the listeria can't grow, and the other levels of bacteria in there can't grow, you know, you're perfectly fine. But, it's like taking potato salad to a barbecue. Leave it in the sun for a few hours, that becomes a deadly element. And put raw milk into a baby's bottle, and take it to the beach, and that becomes a hazard. And that's really where it comes in, not the people that cautiously use it, it's when it gets into greater public. But, as I said, we don't have anything to do with it. It's now a relationship between the state and the farm, and we're kind of out of it. So, I'll leave it at that. With the last comment, that when this first came up, I called my uncle, and my uncle, his whole family used to own Brock's Dairy up in Lawrence. And I asked him what he thought about raw milking, he says, don't do it. He says, before pasteurization, kids used to get sick all the time. And, you know, that's, that plus the basis of the scientific items that we've looked at. Not a single U.S. government agency approves of raw milk, and it can't cross state lines because there's the great day laws that came into effect. Now, on the 96th Main Street, I agree that not a lot of people know that. Years and years ago, we put in an ordinance for the demolition ordinance, I don't remember what year it was, probably like 10 years ago, maybe, something like that. I think this would be the first exercise of that, so it'll be interesting to see how the process goes, and if all the points are hit the right way. And I don't, you know, I don't know any way to advertise it, it's in the agendas, it's listed on all the agendas, it's been talked about in 47 meetings. We talked about it, it was discussed on social media, so, you know, it is what it is. I want to say thank you, and a big thank you to the Fourth of July Committee. As we've said many times, the committee works independently from the town of Bridgewater, but works with the town of Bridgewater. Gets no funding from our budget process, and raises all the funds to bring that spectacular show and put the parade on and the other things. And it's a small committee, and they work their butts off for the month and a half prior to the show, and they make it happen every year, and I hope they can do it next year because it was really good this year. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Souza?
Oh, I don't want to milk it to death. I had to say that. Really, nothing this evening. Again, the Fourth of July Committee, thank them, they did a lot of work. I did help them a little bit what I could, and that's it.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Moore?
I think echoing the comments about the fireworks, this is actually the first time I've seen it in a while. We're normally out of town for a family thing this year, we weren't. And it was by far the best fireworks display I've ever seen. And the experience was amazing, and I can't say enough to the committee that worked tirelessly to advertise it, to raise money for it, to arrange parking for it. It is an amazing thing to see the town come together to put that on, and it was brilliant. So, thank you to everyone who was involved with that. The next thing, you know, I did bring up the naming ordinance, and I do have concerns about naming in general. And, you know, I know the Mitchell family, so, and I'm sure anyone else who does knows that that's the right name for that school. But, politics happens, people change, and names change. And I think we recently saw an activity where a group suspended their policy on naming so that they could name it for someone who's living, and could, you know, so that raised some just awareness around what could happen. And so, for me, the attention to naming, I think just kind of protects, you know, the kind of original intent of some of these building naming activities, so I appreciate the consideration on that. I think that's it.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor George?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to echo again, in regards to the July 4th celebration, the parade was awesome. And it was really nice to see so many people out, it was a gorgeous day. So many people out celebrating, enjoying themselves. The committee, you know, put on a great parade, attracted people to the parade that I don't think I've ever seen, and I don't know how many years I've gone. So, it was really nice, you know, to see new participation in that parade. I can't remember the last time I saw so many Jeeps in one area, which I thought was really neat. The fireworks were outstanding, and they always are. I think one of the things that people have to keep in mind, leading up to the Fourth of July, I was reading a lot of stories that, you know, either towns were not having July 4th fireworks because of budgetary issues, but also, there were some fireworks supply companies that were having supply chain issues that were canceling fireworks for a town. It wasn't that the town couldn't pay, it was the company couldn't get the fireworks for the show. So, we had a, you know, back-to-back home run on that as well. One thing I would say in leaving, is hopefully this will change in the future, but the trash that was left at the field, I think was a little disappointing not to take away from it, you know, but hopefully that's just a one-time occurrence from that perspective. So, I think that's great. I know they've already started their fundraising activity basically today, because they really spent every dime that they had to put on the parade and the fireworks. So, I think that was great, and that's about it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Gallagher?
Thank you, Mr. President. Yes, as everyone has mentioned, the July 4th festivities in this town went off pretty, pretty well. It was a great day to be in Bridgewater, starting with the parade, to the Arts Festival that was down at the old high school, or the Mitchell, whatever the name of that school. We'll get the name soon. Anyway, to the fireworks at night, huge crowd down there, as far as I know, there were hopefully no incidents, and we got through the night, and people came the next day to help pick up the trash. But, as Counselor George said, this year, they ran the full operation with pretty much all the funds that they had raised. So, they're starting now with a little bit less money than they usually do, so they could certainly use a good start to the Fourth of July, which is only 357 days away. So, hopefully, some fundraising will be going on soon, and hopefully, people can donate. But, it was a great day in Bridgewater. It always is, they always do a great job, and it's only a small group of people that put this on.
Well, thank you, Counselor. For myself, I certainly want to also join the array of voices in support of the work of the Fourth of July Committee and all the volunteers who made it possible. I participated, as a number of us did, in the Fourth of July Parade. I was really quite astounded by the turnout, you know, particularly along, I thought along Main Street, and of course, right at the Town Common, or Route 18 rather, in the Town Common. I thought that it was probably the largest turnout I had seen in town in my experience for any parade event. And, of course, the weather contributed greatly. It was a wonderful day to be out, and I think everyone was relieved to, you know, get out and do something in public that they maybe haven't been able to do, and feel very safe about for the past couple of years. So, I thought all in all, it was a tremendous effort, and kudos to all the volunteers and the committee who helped make that possible. Just with respect to raw milk, I want to thank everyone for your indulgence tonight in listening to my presentation. I know that that was very lengthy, it was somewhat repetitive. The reason that I brought it forward tonight, firstly, I was fully aware at the outset that, in fact, the town has no control over the sale of raw milk in Bridgewater. It's a matter for state regulation. I was aware of the fact that the Board of Health no longer has a regulation prohibiting or restricting in any manner the sale of raw milk. But, I felt very strongly that as a matter of public interest, it is important for the public to recognize the hazards implicit in the sale of raw milk and raw milk products as attested by, you know, the entire scientific community. And again, I was not trying to infuse my own opinion in the matter, although it is clear, I'm sure to everyone, that I'm personally opposed to the sale of raw milk. And there's no effort underway to, of which I'm aware, to attempt to prohibit the sale of raw milk in Bridgewater. So, I would like to particularly thank Mr. and Mrs. Hanson for your appearance tonight and your comments, as well as at the committee meeting last week. And Mrs. Hanson, we all did in fact receive each of your emails that were very informative and very helpful. In no manner have my comments this evening or previously been intended to discourage or disrespect what you bring to the town, because we know that you run an admirable operation. We know that you have, you are in some respects really the only, I think, complete family farm in operation in Bridgewater. And certainly, you've expanded your efforts in recent years, with the building of your farms, I'll call it a farm stand, it's not a farm stand, is it? It's really much more than that. But, I know that, and I know that from personal experience. And so, I give you full credit, and I in no manner wish to, you know, provide any impediment to your ability to maximize the economic potential of your business. My concern is strictly one from the standpoint of public health and public safety, which I thought is not widely known or accepted, and should be given more credence. So, to that end, I just want to, once again, thank you for all of your comments and all of your input. As you know, you are perfectly free to approach the state and to seek, to prepare an application for registration for a certificate of registration. And should you do that, I certainly wish you the best. It's not my cup of tea. It's not my cup of tea, but I think that you and others here this evening have made the case that for those people who are so inclined, they should be able to do so if they see fit. And I know that you'll put ample preparation into the various regulatory requirements to ensure safe delivery of a product. So that's my only real comment to close our evening discussion on the matter of raw milk. And with that, I have no further comment for this evening, but I would entertain a motion for adjournment.
On move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Could we have a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Six in favor, zero opposed.
Thank you, and good evening.
Good evening, everyone.